So we need to have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you Fernando, a second?
A second.
A second from Dr. Long, further comments or questions? Go ahead and take a vote. There we go.
Bear with me just one second here. Mr. Amontse?
Hi.
Mrs. Alter?
Hi.
Mrs. Cattrella?
Hi.
Mrs. Giorno?
Hi.
Dr. Long?
Hi.
Mrs. Stecker?
Aye.
Mrs. T. Varcunas?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero, thank you.
All right, excellent. So that brings us to the public participation and we did change the guidelines for people to submit public participation in writing, which has not happened, correct? And there's nobody in the room? No?
Nope, just us.
We're gonna try to make sure we can get the communication out to the public, but hopefully we'll be all back together sooner than later, right? All right, so we'll move on to the next then, which is the report of the superintendent. Superintendent Qualman, I turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam President. We're gonna pull up the presentation here on a different screen, so bear with me. Perfect. Okay, we'll go to slide two on recent activities. I continue to participate daily in the situation reports with the county. Typically, we're learning about the capacity in our medical facilities and we get updates on how many active cases we have in Eagle County. We've had over 400 positive COVID tests in Eagle County, 5,500 in the state of Colorado, and we've had five fatalities here in Eagle County. So our sympathy and condolences go to the families who have lost loved ones in this in this battle. But thus far, our medical capacities look strong. All of our emergency responders are actively engaged in making sure they practice appropriate precautionary measures. And it's been impressive to see the community come together in those daily reports and to see what everybody is doing to try to keep our community safe. I've also been monitoring and responding to our school situation reports, and those are reports that principals are filling in every day. So as they have needs, myself and Katie Giorno and Melissa Riewald-Duon are responding to those and making sure that we get them what they need. I had a conference call with U.S. Congressman Joe Nagus. Representative Nagus is the second congressional district. It's the eastern half of Eagle County. In that conversation with him, there were a few other superintendents on that call, and our plea to him was to advocate more federal funds to come to support schools. As Sandy mentioned previously, we're anticipating a pretty sizable decline in state revenue through our budgeting process for the upcoming year. So anything that the feds can do to help schools will be greatly appreciated. We've also continued our online meetings with principals. We're doing those by grade level, so we have an elementary meeting, a middle school meeting, and a high school meeting. Those have turned into excellent sessions where principals are sharing ideas about what's working for them and getting feedback from their school-alike level peers on what's working and what's not. We can go on to slide three. I've been working on communications to clarify what our grading practices are gonna be, and those will be differentiated by level. Also, addressing retention, we've had quite a few parents and some teachers asking about what our policies will be on retention for next year. Graduation continues to be a hot item. Our class of 2020, we would love to celebrate those seniors as they've concluded an important part of their educational journey. They've earned a ceremony, but whether or not we can do that or not is still up in the air. So we're looking at some alternatives to a graduation ceremony. And also, working with Adele Wilson on a communication regarding evaluations. The state has given us significant flexibility on how we're going to conduct our evaluations here at the end of the year, so we'll have a communication out about that after tomorrow. We do have an evaluation council meeting, and we want to make sure that the Teachers' Association is represented in there in that process. So we'll have more about that at the end of the week. And the communication about grading, retention, and graduation should be out by the end of the week as well. We have, we had a levels meeting yesterday with elementary, today with middle school, and tomorrow with high school. So we need to get their final feedback from the high school group tomorrow, and then I'll have that communication ready to go out on Friday. We've also finalized the housing master plan. You'll see that later in the meeting tonight. It's a very user-friendly version. I want to thank Nick Braun and Tom Braun, Willa Williford, Sandy, and the whole Land Resource Committee. They've all been working diligently to get this plan in place, and I'm excited about what potential that will have for us in terms of getting some affordable housing options out there for our faculty. We know that if we can, if we can have housing that is affordable, we have a much better chance of recruiting and retaining quality educators. What else? I had a conference call with Governor Polis and CDE Commissioner Katie Anthus, and in that call, we were going over details about that evaluation system. So I referenced that earlier when I was talking about the communications, and Adele Wilson, we'll get that out later in the week. I've also been communicating with Sean Colby. Sean's the president of the Board of Education for Eagle County Charter Academy. I do believe that we've worked out an MOU that both sides can feel comfortable with. So what we'll be able to share after the attorneys give it a final thumbs up is an MOU that has a unified enrollment system. That is a piece that I know that the district has been asking for for a long time, so ECCA is willing to go there. We're also looking at expanding the lottery, including a lottery for some geographic neighborhoods in Edwards, and also increase transparency in the lottery and the waitlist process. So once the attorneys give that a final thumbs up, we will bring that back probably before our April 29 meeting for board approval. And the last piece is on calendar survey results. We've had a lot of inquiries from teachers and students and parents about whether or not we should continue to have our spring break the week of April 20. I think the primary arguments to forego spring break are that we're just now getting into a groove with the remote learning. We're all quarantined anyway, so there would be very few who would be traveling. And if we were to attend school that week, then we could end school earlier and end it towards the end of May instead of going into June. And hopefully by that point, we would have quarantines lifted, social distancing regulations lifted, and more flexibility to travel and move around. So I could argue both sides of that all day. Members of the district leadership team felt the same way. We could see pros and cons. So we thought it best to ask our community. So we put out a survey on Facebook, and then we did another one via direct email. And the results of those are very similar, and the consensus thus far with about 4,000 replies is about 70% preferring to work through spring break. But we're gonna continue to collect that feedback. And what we'll need to do as the board is to come back together, hopefully Friday afternoon. I'd like to ask board members if you would be available anytime Friday afternoon for a very quick meeting. I don't have the authority to amend the calendar. Only the board would be able to do that. So we would craft a recommendation for you around how that calendar might be amended, and you would need to approve that. So it could be a very quick meeting on Friday afternoon if you're available. So I'll ask Missy to check in with you and see if that's a possibility. Also note that we did get that blanket waiver from the state for seat time requirements. So if we are wanting to amend the calendar, we can do so freely with the feedback from our community. So I'll ask board members again, check in with Missy. Maybe we can do that towards the end of the meeting and see if Friday is an option for a quick meeting. Madam President, that's it for me. Thank you.
I have a question, Phil. So the communication on Friday, is there a way we can get that in advance so we know what it's gonna say and let it?
Absolutely, yeah. I'll try to get that drafted up tonight. We already have a memo with the results from the survey thus far, but we don't have it drafted in such a way that it's like an actual motion, so I'll work on that.
No, I'm not really talking about the calendar as much as you said that there was a communication going out Friday. Is that the only thing that it's about, or what?
It's about grades. It's about retention.
So I mean, have we had that discussion about grading as a board? Have we, I mean, do we know what's going on with it? Do we?
We haven't. I can share with you. It's been conversations with DOT and then with principals, and principals having those same conversations with their leadership teams and buildings. So it's been a long process of editing through many different versions to get to where it is right now, but I'm happy to share that with you this evening so that you can see it and comment in advance of the distribution on Friday.
Okay, and then what else is in there besides grading?
Grading, retention, and graduation.
So just like graduation ceremony? Or what you need to do to graduate?
A little bit of both. It's talking about whether or not we are going to make a decision on graduation right now, or if we're gonna wait a couple of weeks and see what happens with these social distancing orders, and that seniors need to stay engaged with their classes remotely in order to earn the final credits that they need to graduate.
Okay, so on another topic, and I don't know, maybe this isn't the time for it, but given that many districts in the state have already made the determination that kids aren't going back, what's your thought? We're just gonna ride it out and see what happens, or at what point do we need to make that decision?
I think that would be part of the decision on Friday. So when you are asked to vote on amending the calendar regarding spring break, we could also address whether or not we're going to continue with the remote learning through the end of the school year. I think people are anxious to have that decision made so they can project whether or not they need to be thinking about in-class instruction or more remote learning.
I have a question too, Phil. Yeah. I know, I think that we were supposed to be trying to get into staff meetings and stuff, and I know it's a little complicated, but in a sense, it's a little easier now. Are there staff meetings going on at the high schools or middle schools, grade schools that we could just be invited to? And maybe that's a way we could get into some of those.
Absolutely, yeah. Principals continue to have those meetings either weekly or bi-weekly, so we can get a schedule of when those are happening and send that out to you and give you the, they're mostly through Google Hangout, so you can just jump on through those links, but we can make that happen for sure.
I think that'd be, that'd be nice to do now.
Yeah.
Any other questions? I guess on Shelley's question, you think we'll be ready on Friday to make the decision about May without any more further guidance from the state with the stay-home order through April 30th? We're gonna, we have any info, advanced information that was gonna help us with that decision so far in advance?
The governor has announced that he won't make any further announcements until April 20th, but I think that for the sanity of our staff and students and parents, that if we wait that long to make the call, they're gonna get increasingly frustrated. So with, you know, so many states and districts within Colorado that have called it for the year, I think that we could be in a position to make that call.
I can see the benefit that way too, and then those teachers can make sure their lessons are all the way planned out if we continue with the remote learning, and then students would be able to work ahead, or they would know what their end game was. I can see that.
Yeah, I totally agree that it would be fair enough that we make a decision. I just feel a lot of anxiety from the community and this survey coming out. I got reached out by a lot of parents, and the anxiety is there, like, when are you guys gonna decide? So I think it's great that we, if we can meet on Friday and just make some decisions so that the community know what's happening for the next couple of months.
Yep, agreed.
All right, any other questions on the superintendent's report before we move to board reports?
Thank you.
Thank you. So, well, we'll start with, I don't have it down in alphabetical order. Who's first, Fernando or Kelly? Fernando.
Sure, I'll give it a start. There's just so many things that I wanna talk about that I'm not even sure how to even start warning them, but please stop me if that's something, that's a topic that needs to be addressed in another time. And Superintendent, please just feel free to tell me otherwise as well. But first and foremost, thank you all for, all the Eagle County schools for their work that they're doing. I know it's something that it's been just hectic, you guys trying to find out better or the, whatever ways to make sure that the students and the staff are taken care of. As far as I go, I have a lot of interviews and Zoom meetings throughout different areas in the community. I just finished up a radio interview with Lanua Mix, and we presented some great information that I'm working on with a few other partners. But also, I guess I'll just move into this. So I've been getting tons of questions about the surveys, which Superintendent already just kinda said that we're gonna hopefully do it on Friday, that we're going to get better answers for that. But on Dr. Long's comment of us joining other staff meetings, I would really love to join on those, especially for my district, just because I've heard, it is my perception that there are students, including seniors, that at this point, they would not graduate if they continue not performing as they are with the online training. So again, this is only my perception. I have no data to back it, but I wanna make sure that if it's the case, then I don't wanna tell seniors or the parents of the seniors that, one, they might not graduate and then create panic, but also I don't wanna lie to anyone and say, hey, you might wanna look into being more active in making sure that your student is doing the work via internet. With that said, I've also heard that there are some parents and teachers that, or I'm sorry, students that do not have internet at home. And I offer a few other solutions. I found out the library offers hotspots to rent out to the students, and among other things that Eagle County Schools is helping out with. But on that note, there was the last meeting, when was it, Monday? Monday or Tuesday? And I believe Melissa was on it as well, and it was more about how can the parents know what the students are doing if they themselves can't even log in into the system? So that's another question that I've been getting off that, okay, well, my student tells me that he's doing great. I don't know how to log in, or I don't know how to put anything else other than just go on Facebook. So that was another concern. I know, I'm just tossing a lot of bullets to you, and I don't think that that's fair for you all to answer, but I think that it's important to voice those comments just because they, they're being addressed and people are concerned. And the last thing I wanna do is create more confusion and make sure that I answer to them directly to the questions that they are asking. And if that's a thing that we might have to address them on Friday or another meeting, I would love to, but I just get all these mixed feelings from the community.
Fernando, if I could address a couple of your points. The technology department has distributed some hotspots already to some families that did not have Wi-Fi, and they're waiting on another shipment to come in of the hardware, and we'll get more distributed as necessary. So we can help families out if they need Wi-Fi assistance. And if parents are uncertain about what students should be doing, or they need Wi-Fi, or they need a device at home, they should be reaching out to their school principal. Their principal can serve as a point person for them in connecting them to teachers either by phone, or by email, or with a translator. So we can certainly help those parents. I appreciate their desire to understand what the kids are doing and how frustrating it can be when the kids are on different platforms and it's hard to understand the task. But teachers are willing and able to coordinate with parents. So have them reach out to their principals. The principals are easy to track down, and then they can connect them with their teachers and help them feel more empowered about what's happening.
Thank you. I appreciate it. And that was my suggestion with the families that I've talked to. Obviously, they immediately pulled the "I don't speak English" part of it, and I said, well, that shouldn't be a problem because there's, there's staff that should be there to help you out whether you speak English or not. So that was my suggestion to them to contact the school directly and to just not voice them to me, but voice them to the school that the students are going to. So Superintendent, thank you.
May I add a note? Gibson Creek Middle School did some parent forums in a Google Hangout like this today in both English and Spanish. It was great. Brian Berger from Technology was there, teachers were there, answered parents' questions, and we're gonna be recommending to other principals and other schools that they do something similar. It was awesome for parents.
Thank you. I appreciate that comment.
Anything else for us, Fernando? Thank you for all the work you're doing on the front lines there. Anything else you wanna share?
No, other than in reference to the, my work as a 911 dispatcher, I've been trying to educate through different organizations the way to address any emergencies, obviously to call 911, and they will be offered services as they need them, but to also not call 911 if they only have a general question about COVID. And that's where I direct them to the official websites that we have in place already. But other than that, ourselves, I do have to drive to work, but once I'm at work, I am in lockdown, so no, not even officers, chiefs, directors, anyone is allowed into the center other than ourselves. So we also wear masks, we're with the proper gear also, but yeah, we don't have any contact as well, so we're following the same rules.
Excellent. Thank you very much. We're just running through board reports here in alphabetical order, since we're not sitting in a row, and that brings us to Kelly Alter.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. So I went to the Land Resource Committee meeting. Last week we had it, as Phil or Superintendent Qualman alluded to, that plan is now finalized, and that's actually gonna be presented tonight, so I won't really talk a whole lot about the details of it. But it's really exciting, and I think we've sort of decided to try to continue moving forward, even though a lot of things have changed, that ultimately, housing is gonna be a problem and has always been a problem for our teachers. And, you know, we're gonna be taking some steps to hopefully create some affordable housing, so that's really exciting. And other than that, I'm pretty much hunkering down at home with two high school students, so it's been pretty interesting to spend this much time with my kids. It's actually in many ways very enjoyable, probably more for me than for them. And I have a high school senior too, so I'm right there. He's got a bad case of senioritis. I'm hoping that he's gonna get the credits to graduate himself. But anyway, that's about it. So, but I've been pretty impressed with what's been going on with the district and online schooling, and it's certainly not perfect, but it's a pretty imperfect time. So I think that we're, everybody's doing a really great job. So thank you to the staff and everybody. It's impressive.
Great, thank you, Kelly. All right, so that brings us to me, Cattrella. And I've been here touching base in with the board members and trying to keep them up to speed in between the meetings and with my neighbors and other people around, making sure everyone's doing all right. I appreciate Fernando's comments from his constituents. I got a comment from a neighbor today who's a parent of two high school students, and it was highest praise of all for the district, especially for Badlem Mountain High School, but the classes were going well, the teachers were stepping up to the plate, they're doing amazing work, and which this is one of our hard-to-please client, shall we say, this family, and she gave us some highest kudos, so I wanna make sure that the teachers know that families are appreciating them, and then it's, we also have to realize that there's other families that are struggling with, you know, just with technology and access, and so that's a, that's a challenge. We have the full gamut of family experience, I think. I'm really pleased we're making progress with the MOU with ECCA. Hopefully, the lawyers will run it through. It's got a little bit of compromise on both sides, I think, but hopefully the board will be pleased when they see it. And it's important for us to remember that we're moving forward, that that's a school that's part of our team, and I think some of the steps will be outlined in the MOU will really help us work better together in the future. That's our long-term goal. And I just, yeah, really appreciate all the effort, extra effort everybody's going through to make this happen, the schools and remote learning and talking like this each morning in living rooms is really a remarkable experience. So thank you all. And then that takes us to Mrs. Giorno.
Hi, I also attended the LRC meeting, and like Kelly said, we're gonna talk about that later tonight, so I won't go into details. I attended Head Start Policy Council last week, and we talked a lot about the equity work. The parents had requested that we give them more information on that, so it was fun to hear their input and thoughts about that program. We actually had a teacher that participated as well so that she could talk about the trainings she's had and sort of how it's impacted her classroom and her interactions with other parents. And then I attended a Colorado Association of School Boards, State Board meeting, and amazingly, we were scheduled to work on the mission vision values, and so we did that work remotely, which I wouldn't have thought would work, but we actually did make some progress. The other thing about that board is that we are meeting weekly, just for about an hour, one morning a week, just sort of to touch base on what other districts are doing and what issues related to COVID and schools not being open, just to kind of have a forum for people to ask questions and share their experiences. And then also, just on a personal note, I have two high schoolers and a college kid at home, but my high schoolers, I have to say that they're pretty busy. They definitely have plenty of work and they know what they're supposed to be doing. I haven't really gotten involved, but I am also getting a lot of communication from their teachers of different courses, some more than others, but I definitely have heard from many of them, and I appreciate them, or their efforts to keep parents in the loop. And I don't know, I've been wildly impressed at the high school level with how much has continued to carry on, particularly as kids prepare for the AP tests coming up in May. So that's it.
Great, thanks, Shelley. Thanks for all that work on the CASB board. That's, that's a lot of work, and I appreciate you taking that on. Dr. Long, brings us to you.
Thank you. I have two high school students, freshmen and sophomore, and I have a middle school sixth grader. And we did have a teacher conference with, my high schooler's name is Tori, her teacher. We've met with them a couple times and talking about getting more information about the homework and things like that. And the boys are smart, but, and probably too smart. They know to appear busy so that we don't get too nosy into their academic affairs, because we do have a tendency to do that. But they, we are tracking their grades and track, making sure the first part of their day is spent doing that. I did challenge each of them as well, and maybe it's a decent challenge for each of us to do that thing that you always said you would do, but you thought you never had time to do. So I'm asking my children, my wife and myself to do something new, and I may have talked about this before, but I did finally get a sewing machine. I've always wanted to learn how to sew, so I'm going to try to learn how to sew over this break. My son, middle son's playing ukulele. The other one is coaching an esport team. He's a captain of an esport team, and then my daughter is reading a lot of work, reading a lot of, she's trying to go through the whole Harry Potter series, and then she's starting to get more into drawing and painting as well, so that's very good. We're happy with all that. My wife did go serve on Monday and Wednesday, passing out the lunches at the Lake Creek location, and she said yesterday, or Monday, they location. And she said yesterday or Monday, they did 80 lunches. Today they did 62. So there's still a strong need for that. And I tried to go on Monday myself, but it was when I got there, Tony or I think it's Tim or Tony told, I got there and I called because the doors weren't open at the high school. And he said that they didn't need any more help at the Battle Mountain High School location. And that he was going to try to coordinate with the signup genius to make that more more up to date or something like that. So probably people have heard as well about CMC. They just, they just sent out a notice that summer at CMC is going to be, they're going to waive tuition and fees and books. So I just sent an email to each of you with the details of that. But that's open to if there's any dual enrollment students at the high schools, they're already CMC students. So they can get some of these classes for free over the summer. Maybe probably the principals and I think Phil, you guys already know this, but it's a great chance for students to very, very low risk to take some of those Gen Ed classes if they're planning on going to school somewhere. The bio classes, the math classes, English, everything must be online. But there's going to be no tuition, no fees and no book charges for those. So that's a, that's a, I sent the details in an email to everyone who's on the school board list. So you might check your school board email if you have any information about that or you need more information about that. So we had summer built at CMC. So we're rebuilding it now. That's what I've been really busy with at work is just trying to move all of our classes online for the summer. And we're going to offer no, no classes on campus. And that means a lot of the outdoor classes, the physical education classes too will probably be canceled. But that's what I've been doing and thanks.
Dr. Long, we're really grateful about the opportunity that CMC has offered for this summer. I was talking to Dr. Jarno about that yesterday. And she's working on getting that information out to our high school counselors so that all the kids can be aware of that opportunity. That's very gracious. And be a great benefit for our kids. So thanks for anything that you did to make that happen.
Yeah, yes, Ted, thank you very much. I'm sure that's keeping you busy too, re rebuilding the summer. Where I and I are reading and writing poetry for our new thing. So everyone can think about their, your personal challenge. That brings us to Mrs. Sticker.
Hard to follow. What an amazing resource, Ted. And thank you to CMC. While the past two weeks have been quite busy for me and for our family, it feels like it's been over months since our last board meeting. But a couple of the points I brought up in my last update are just continuing, I'm continuing to support the wellness committee. It was great to hear a little bit about that from Melissa earlier. The Family Engagement Subcommittee of that Wellness Committee made the decision to meet weekly. So we continue to meet every week. We had to even make those weekly meetings a little bit longer each week because there's so much going on as far as supports and also needs for families in our community and just strategizing with a really great group of partners of the school district and faculty of the school district around that. At Mountain Youth, we have taken a lot of our programming virtually. So our Eat Chat Parent Series, we started off last week and have another virtual session scheduled for Monday. Mondays is going to be around the power of positivity during these times. The last one was Anxiety 101 and we had over 100 people tune in. It's been just amazing to see the amount of support and opportunities educationally to provide for families. It's almost hard to keep up with everything that's out there. So I specifically appreciate everything that's recorded that can be able to be watched on your own time. The Valley's Voice work led by students and that Protect Our Valley campaign to get their messages out to peers about the importance of safety and abiding by the recommendations during this time has been really strong. Last I heard, they had 6,000 plus connections through Instagram. And they launched a quarantine challenge, teen T E E N challenge. And there's prizes being awarded for young people that are posting creative messages around staying safe. And then a smaller group of those students, I got to sit in and observe. We are very grateful at Mountain Youth. We're hiring a new youth engagement position. And five high schoolers in our community led that interview process with three candidates this afternoon and planned the questions, planned who was going to say what. They were, I think, more nervous than the candidates and at some points, but it was really amazing to get to sit in and be a part of that. And then Melissa also mentioned the Healthy Kids Colorado Survey. Most of the local school level reports have been delivered. And so I'm starting to work with our schools to do school based analysis, what we're seeing trends in 2019 compared to past years of data, just at a school level. Unfortunately, UC Denver's had some delays, so we won't be able to look at the aggregate community data until sometime this summer, but we're eager for that. And then been also trying to balance all of that with being a kindergarten teacher here at our house and also teaching my almost five year olds. So I've been trying to treasure those moments, but like many of you, probably the temperature changes hour to hour here. And so just trying to stay focused on the positives and keep everything balanced as much as possible.
Right. Thank you, Michelle. That's a great, that's a great attitude. So all we can do is try to find the positivity and the silver linings and keep each other safe. Mrs. Tivarkunas.
Okay, not much to report here other than just being a mom and a teacher to a kindergartner. So that's, that takes a lot. And yes, I want to listen to mom, of course. So that's been a little rough on us, but we're managing. And then fourth grader, I'm impressed with the teachers at the elementary level. They are definitely doing a great job keeping the kids busy, sending them videos to teach them what they're supposed to be learning. And then, you know, once in a while I have to Google how to do long divisions these days and try and teach that because it's definitely different than what it used to be. And so things are interesting in our household. Everything's great. We're healthy and our challenge is my husband and I are speaking Portuguese to the kids because we know that language. And so we're starting to teach them Portuguese. So other than that, nothing, nothing more to report.
All right, great. Thank you very much. Yes. And just thank you to everybody for all the extra work. This takes us to the old and new business.
Kate, I forgot to say one thing. I meant to mention that, and I know I kind of mentioned it last board meeting, but I feel like when I listen to what's going on at other districts around the state, many of them literally took three weeks. Granted, in many cases, one of those was their spring break. But three weeks before they were up and running with their online learning. So the fact that we gave teachers, you know, the kids went home on Friday, kind of knew that this is what was going to happen. And so teachers, I think, had already talked to them about their plans. And then they had Monday to sort of ramp up. And on Tuesday, we were up and running. I think is remarkable. And I mean, you would not believe how rare it is when I listen to what happened in other districts throughout the state. And I mean, at this point, many are, you know, pretty much everybody is up and running, but it was very, very common that it took definitely two and often three weeks, even in some of the sort of big, major districts in the front range. So I just commend our staff for getting that rolling so quickly.
Yes, I think we did an excellent job and how quickly it was. And I think one of the benefits that might come out of this whole experiment is that we're forcing technology, pushing it to its limits, testing it to the breaking point. And when we get to go back into the classroom, maybe the balance and what we can use with the technological tools that were developed here might really do some good work for the kids. I know we're anxious to get back in schools and we don't know when that will happen, but we're going to decide soon. All right, rolling into this old and new business, we have our executive session with personnel, superintendent goals and evaluation and negotiations. And we'll have some our tactic updates, strategic plans, and hopefully some of the approval of some contracts and monitoring reports here is all on here. We're going to probably Phil and I, we'll get to talking, we'll work it all out. We have a bye week in between now, right? Because of spring break, whether we cancel spring break or not, we still won't have the meeting until the 29th because that's on the schedule. And so we'll have some time, we'll maybe be moving the budget work ahead to a whole two week session. So anybody have anything they want to add or that we're missing that we need to get on the schedule that we don't have? All right, if there is, it comes up, you just let us know. We're here for you. So at long last, that brings us to the Braun, Team Braun, for the approval of the Eagle County Schools Housing Master Plan. Turn it over to you.
Thank you, Kate. Happy to, happy to be here. It is a little bit bittersweet because actually Willa Williford, who is the architect and primary force behind the development of this plan, should be here tonight to present this. She's got a good excuse, though. Best we can tell, she's had her baby and she's out of pocket for the next three weeks. So I will try to fill in on her behalf. We've kept you pretty informed during this process, so I'm not going to walk you through the plan. Hopefully, that's not necessary. I just want to hit on a few highlights. What do we set out to do? Boil it down. We really wanted to better define your staff's needs and figure out options for how we can address those needs to help with the housing situation. How do we do that? Staff outreach anchored really by a staff survey that we had, I forget, 700 responses out of your 900 employees, a remarkable response. We did research, we took that input. We evaluated different options for programs and for the development of housing to address the problem. The plan defines a strategy. It's a 10 year plan. It's action oriented. And what I think is really key is, as you dive into the plan, you'll see for the first five years, every year, there are performance measures, benchmarks or measures for success. So we know along the way, are we achieving our goals? As you look at this plan, it's important to keep in mind that it's a master plan. It flies at a pretty high level, but it does define a path forward, a vision for how we can address this problem. It answers a lot of questions, but realistically, it probably raises as many questions that will be answered in the coming months and years as we work towards addressing our housing situation. What the plan does, it sets goals, clear goals for programs. It sets a goal to develop up to 120 housing units in the next 10 years. It establishes affordability standards for those units. It defines what we, where we want to be a year from now. And if all goes well, we will be poised to get in the ground for two housing projects, one in Edwards and one in Eagle. A year from now, we hope to have a clear defined strategy for Malloy Park and how to develop that area. As we reviewed this with the Land Resource Committee last week, the question came up, gosh, isn't this kind of aggressive? And I'm not going to tell you it isn't, but I'm also not going to tell you we can't get there. That these goals aren't achievable. It's just going to take a lot of focus and a lot of work. The plan acknowledges affordability and the challenges with that. It talks about partnerships and the roles others can play to help us get us where we want to be. It talks about funding potential. It takes a broader look at our land resources beyond just Malloy Park for how we can chip away at this, this problem. It defines a 10 year timeframe, as I said, in years one through five. We've got very explicit steps that we're going to take and measures for how we are being successful with how we address those, those steps. I'll end it there. There's a lot more work yet to be done. A lot has been done. This document, I think, is a great vision and path forward for where we want to be. But it's just the start. And hopefully it's going to send us down a path to get some things done here. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
All right. Do we have questions or do we have additional input on the Land Resource Committee members?
The only other thing, can you hear me, that I was going to add is we did have some discussion about given that the landscape of landscape has changed and that the economy is in a different place than it was just months ago. You know, does that mean that we should be revising the plan? And I think the group had an interest, you know, or a discussion of that. And we all know, if you've been here very long, that this is a never ending problem and it's something that, you know, waxes and wanes a little bit as the economy changes, but finding housing that's affordable and accessible for our teachers and staff is not going to go away. And it's something that you know, continues to be a problem. We may have some advantages by moving forward at a time when the economy is down. But to think that it's something that we don't need because times have changed. I just think most of us felt like that's simply not going to be the case. So it's just my two cents.
Well, and to add a little bit to what Shelley said, you know, keep in mind too, that this plan is sort of a working document too. So it will evolve with time.
Was that?
Yeah. Oh, can you not hear me?
All the time was the last thing I heard.
Oh, sorry. But the, but the plan will evolve over time. So, you know, as things continue to sort of unfold and as we see what happens to, you know, the cost of building and housing costs and everything else and the ability to do it, that it is a document that will evolve. So just, you know, as we approve it today or not approve it, just know that that's a, you know, that this is, that this is our goal. It's lofty. I think that we're trying to stay the course. I think we know that housing is really important. And that this, you know, this document will evolve or can evolve.
I would say too, reading this document and just reflecting on the past year and a half or so that I've been on the board, I had thought for a while that Malloy was our answer. That's where we were focusing our efforts. And I'd say in the past few months, looking at some of those other opportunities, smaller acreage, but could be a shorter term build. I mean, I, I can't wait for us to move forward in a responsible but aggressive manner with some of those other opportunities, with Malloy being a great opportunity, but so big to tackle. I'm, I'm just really excited about pursuing some of those others. So I appreciate all the work that's gone into this, not just with this phase, but for many, many, many years. So thank you.
Anybody else? I've been very concerned over the years, talking about where we're going to land with on Malloy because it's such a precious resource and it is a big project. So I'm really looking forward to the lessons that we'll learn on studying with some of these smaller ones and continuing with the community outreach and making sure that we really come up with the right product there. And I'm just so, so grateful for, to Tom and Nick for all the work that goes into this. And I like the changes, the graphic changes. It's definitely a lot easier to read this time. And we'll be revisiting it as we come back over the years. And I love the benchmarks and really tangible parts of the report that we're going to be able to keep track of our progress. So excellent work, gentlemen. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
More comments or questions? It is an action item.
I could make the motion, Kate, but I don't think I'm allowed to.
I was about to say, here, I move to approve the Eagle County Schools Housing Master Plan.
I'll second it.
Further comments or questions? We've been talking about this for quite a long time. So I think we're probably pretty solid. If there's no further comments, it'll be missing. She's typing away. She's got her work cut out for her.
I apologize. I have two screens going. I need another monitor. And we're ready for a vote. Mr. Amonza.
Aye.
Mrs. Alter?
Aye.
Mrs. Cattarella?
Aye.
Mrs. Jarno?
Aye.
Dr. Long?
Aye.
Mrs. Decker?
Aye.
Mrs. Tivarkunas?
Aye.
We pass a seven zero. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, Missy. And thank you to the Braun family and to Willa. And congratulations to Willa. If you could pass on, when you get a chance to talk to her, pass on her, our congratulations to her for the the new baby.
We will do that. We'll do that. And thank you all very much.
We look forward to seeing her again soon in the coming months when we're all back together in person.
Terrific.
That takes us to information item here about the non renewal process. And Adele Wilson has got this one.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It feels kind of strange being, can you hear me? Can you guys hear me? Yep.
Yes.
Good. It feels kind of strange doing this remotely. It feels kind of strange doing this remotely. This is our annual review of the non-renewal process, and we have some new members of the board, so please definitely ask questions if you have any. In a couple of weeks, on May 13th, we anticipate that we'll be bringing non-renewals to you. And this process is our probationary teachers in their first, second, or third year of teaching with the district. And this is, it's a legal requirement that we would go through, and it's not dependent upon their evaluation score. And we can non-renew a probationary teacher for any reason or no reason at all. And so when we bring those names to you, please know that we've already gone through a process with the principal and discussing their needs as far as potentially staffing, or perhaps they feel that they can do better, have a better fit for their building. This is the process. We just need to make sure that we are not doing any of them based on any sort of discrimination, so nothing against their race, their gender, et cetera, et cetera. When we bring those names to you, most often, nobody shows up to contest our non-renewals, but sometimes they do show up. And we ask that you have a conversation with them, listen to their reason, but really don't necessarily engage. Our legal counsel always advises that we keep those names on the consent agenda and that you can, as the board, you can make that decision to non-renew them all at once, you can do individual names, you can pull off a name and wait until a further meeting. But legally, we have to non-renew teachers by June 1st. If we do not, then they are automatically renewed. So it's a, there's a timing piece with this and, you know, some legal pieces that we need to, some hoops that we need to jump through. But really, when we bring those names to you, we've done a lot of research already, so we ask that you move forward on the consent agenda and don't really engage too much. They may show up to an exec session, and then we have a whole new set of rules to work through, or we, they may show up for a public session. And if they do for the public session, we really ask you to not engage with them because then we're potentially getting ourselves into some sticky hot water. You may have questions about those teachers who are beyond their three years, so they're considered tenured or non-probationary. This is not a process for them, this is strictly for those teachers in their first, second, or third year. The non-probationary teachers, if we were to be considering to remove them from their position, it's a lengthy process called dismissal, or it is based on their two years of an ineffective rating with their evaluation. So we hope that we're not in that situation, and at this time, we don't look as though we are, so that is a good thing. We anticipate having a similar number of non-renewals as we do each year. We hire several teachers on an interim one-year contract, so they know that at the beginning of that year, they've signed on basically to be employed for one year only, and many times, they're filling a position for someone who is on a leave of absence, or maybe a school has a bubble of student enrollment and needs an extra section. So those folks, it's pretty straightforward. I would ask, do you guys have any questions for those of you who are new to this process?
I just have a question, given the online thing, so we have communicated, or if someone communicates to you and says they want to contest it with the board, you would set something up and we would do it virtually like this, or how is that, is that allowed?
I will double-check that with legal, but we would do a similar process that we're doing right now with the, having them come and do the Google Hangout with us. They will receive their notices before that May 13th meeting and obviously will be, that will likely be happening virtually via an email versus being hand-delivered that we usually do when we're in buildings. Any other questions?
The only other question I would have is, so by the time that this list would come to us for non-renewal, you've already been through, I mean, they have been through probably a process involving their union?
Potentially, but not everybody is a member of the association. I believe it's only about 33% of our licensed staff are actually a member of the association. And so usually, the conversation happens strictly between the teacher and the principal, and then the principal brings that name to me, and then I have a conversation with them to make sure that, you know, it's all following all the protocols and it's not, and no one is being discriminated against, and that it's a fair process. So, and then, and then they receive that notice that their name will be presented to the board. So we've gone through several steps, and it shouldn't ever really be a surprise to anybody.
Okay.
Any other questions about the process? Oh, go ahead, Adele.
No, I was just, that's what I was saying, too. Any other questions?
Any questions at all? The years we go through this, yeah, the process, the teacher should not be surprised, they should know what it is. Generally, if they're on a one-year contract, they know. If it's something that has been working out, they've met with their principal, and very rarely do we, does it get brought to us as a board. But it is always something to be mindful of when it comes around that May 13 meeting and to just be understanding of the process. This is a HR issue between the principals, and it just says we usually approve the personnel list without getting into it. The hiring and firing is on the micro level and we're on the macro level. Again, we just, we go with the guidance that comes from our competent HR department. So if there are no other questions, we can move on, but we have plenty of time for this, if anybody wants to know a little bit more.
No, thanks for explaining the process, I had no idea. This happened at a district level, so this is totally new for me. So, thank you, and if I have any questions, I'll email you.
Okay, sounds good. Thanks, Luke.
All right, along the pregnant pause, I think everybody else is probably good then. And we have a couple contracts to approve. Thank you very much, Adele, for your explanation. So Sandy will pop back up here, and this is an action item to talk about the Gibson Creek Middle School roof.
All right, good evening. So you have before you tonight, it is an action item, and it's the follow-up part of replacing the roof at Gibson Creek Middle School. We've had a couple studies that the board has already approved to figure out the engineering piece of that, of what it would cost to replace it. And we actually already have a bid on it that is guaranteed from 2008. So we have a not-to-exceed total cost of the $944 to $11 in order to replace the roof. One of the things we've done is already submitted to BEST, Building Excellent Schools Today, to get some matching funds to help support the cost. Regardless whether we get the funds or not, we will need to move forward with replacement of the roof. If we are awarded the grant, then at least we would be able to reduce those costs and be able to have those funds to go to other projects. So we're keeping our fingers crossed on that one. It is already in the budget to be able to spend the dollars on this. We've been accumulating the funds and carrying them over in the capital reserve fund for a few years now to be able to support this replacement. So financially, we are set to go on it. So if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer those for you.
Right, and I guess I was reflecting back on Fernando's earlier question, and you mentioned that we've been saving the funds in capital reserve. The capital reserve and the operating expenses are two separate things, so any changes that we would have in our operating budget are completely separate from any thing that we have planned in our capital reserve. Is that correct?
That is correct. We have some, we do a general fund transfer to support capital reserve projects. These funds have already been transferred or in there. And transferring the funds for capital reserve is something that I would encourage to continue to do on a regular basis because we do have continued needs and will have those. It will be a while before we have the capacity to bond to go back to the voters' task for additional funds to support our capital needs. So it's something we're going to want to continue, but these funds are already in there currently.
I have a quick question, Sandra. How old is the roof?
We are at year 23, I believe, on a 20-year roof. And so we already have multiple leaking issues and stuff where it needs to be replaced. We're moving from a 20-year to a 30-year based on the thickness of the EPDM, and so we should be better off as we move forward in the next 30 years.
Very good, thank you.
Sounds like a song, doesn't it? My next 30 years.
I just wonder a little bit about perception, just because, you know, even for people that are involved, it's confusing to keep track of that capital is separate from operating. And so I didn't know if there was some way that, you know, once the projects get started, if we could run an article or do something that explains that we've been saving this for ages and ages and that we're also looking for matching funds from BEST, or, you know, some funds from BEST, or I just worry that if we're in a place where we're struggling with school funding next fall, and then we take on a big project like that, it's confusing to people to understand the difference.
Right. I'm sure we could work with Dan to help do some type of communication and first release to get it out there to let the community know that we've already had these funds reserved and budgeted, and it's a much-needed item to repair.
And then the other thing is, is there something in the contract that specifies that people that work on it would be local?
Well, the bid was already done by Arapaho Roofing, and so they've guaranteed the price back in 2018.
Right, but I don't know them, so are they from Denver, or are they from here, or who are they?
They actually have done a lot of our roofing agreements, their main headquarters is Denver. However, they do have individuals that live here and those that commute here and actually live here over the summer to do roofing work.
It just seems like that's also something that is going to be a sensitive issue, given the environment.
Understood.
I agree with Shelley, is there any way we can get some bids from, especially now that nobody, a lot of people don't have jobs anymore, and can we get bids from local companies, see if they can match it at least? And...
I mean, I'm not really suggesting we get new bids because I understand that, you know, it's a big project and it's the kind of thing that we need certain companies to do, but I didn't know if there was some way we could go to them and just encourage or, you know, if there's some way that we can get as many of those jobs to be locals as possible.
Right.
I don't know.
So, and just so you know, that local companies, everybody had an opportunity to bid on it initially, and so they were part of that competitive bid process that we go through. And so it wasn't as if they were not, in fact, part of the bidding process that we went through, gave preferential points to local companies, and they still came in with the best price and the right vendor for us. So it wasn't done outside of considering local in any way whatsoever, because that was part of our whole process with the bond to ensure locals got preferences, so they got additional points towards that.
Right, and that was a question that was asked to me just the other day, was, do we have to go with the lowest bidder? And we don't always go with the lowest bidder because we use this preferential point system, and the lowest price is one part of the rubric. And then other factors that consider, because we also need the most qualified, especially for these special roofs that go on schools, and other qualifications, right? There's a rubric that's been established that we've used that is, makes the bid selection a very fair and transparent process.
Right, and part of the process when we do any of the bids, you do get those preferential points, but our district policies do allow us to still choose the vendor that we feel would be best for the project overall. And that kind of helps eliminate people that do like the lowballing the bids just to get the job, to where you can still pick a high-quality company that you know can do the job well. But overall, within this, Arapaho's bid actually came in much less than any of the other ones.
So, and then regarding the concerns about the public perception, I saw a little chat here from the communications team. Dan said that he can most definitely take care of that and work on getting the article, and when it's close, maybe we'll get some BEST funds and we'll have a really great win-win story for that paper, or maybe we'll, whatever.
Right, well, and I mean, if they are using some local labor, I mean, maybe we can portray it as a positive, you know, for the community and, but, you know, if we, it seems like that there is a spin out that could be put on it that could be positive, it just, I think it needs to be out there.
Okay.
Further questions or comments about the contract that's ready for approval? All right, Missy, when you're ready, we need a motion.
I'll move to approve the AIA contracts for the Gibson Creek Middle School roof project for $944,211.
Second?
Second by Kelly Alter. Further comments or questions from the team? Missy?
Mr. Ramonza.
Aye.
Mrs. Alter.
Aye.
Mrs. Pacharela.
Aye.
Mrs. Jarno.
Aye.
Dr. Wong.
Aye.
Mrs. Decker.
Aye.
Mrs. T. Varounis.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0, thank you.
Great, thank you, Missy. So, and then the chat field ditch crossing agreement?
Yes, so Scott and Cappy Green, they actually own a development company, Greens Landing, and they have a subdivision that they're working on in Gibson. And it happens to have access points that cross the chat-filled ditch, and so they needed to come and request an agreement from all of the ditch owners in order to do some maintenance and actually put in culverts that would go for the ditch waters to run through, and then driveways would access over the top of the culverts. And so they put together a requested agreement for us to review and sign. And as part of the district's process with anything that has to do with water rights, we always have that reviewed by our legal counsel that works with water. And so they've reviewed it, and there was some information in there, some revisions to the language that they wanted changed. And so we've been working with the Eagle County's attorney as well as Scott Green's attorney to come up with a negotiated agreement that would work. So in the packet tonight, you actually have a draft agreement that we've been working on, as well as the requested agreement from Scott Green. And the approval tonight is to give authorization to legal and myself to continue negotiating on the agreement, but, and allowing me as the chief operating officer to sign on behalf of the Board of Education. The request with that includes that as long as the agreement does not significantly alter the intent of the agreement that you would be looking at tonight. The great news is, is I can tell you that as of very late this afternoon, that all of the attorneys did come to an agreement, and so they will be forwarding me a final copy tomorrow, and it does not alter the intent of the agreement. So we are at a place where we can, as you guys could... So we are at a place where we can, as you guys could consent and approve this tonight, that we would be able to allow Scott to move forward with his development and installation of the culverts. We did go about this a little bit different this time. And it all has to do with timing of when the maintenance on the ditch needs to be done in order to turn the water on for the ditch owners. And Scott will have to be working with the current owners to release some of the water and still do the maintenance during the same time period because they, we need to get the ditch water on already. But I feel confident that there is no risk or liability to the district by signing this agreement and would recommend that you move forward with the approval.
Right. That's great. It has been going back and forth for quite some time. And with, again, with water, we're always exercising extreme caution to make sure that our rights are protected. And it's great that we're working with Eagle County. And we appreciate Scott Green's patience with the process. But we wanted to make sure that we didn't have any risk or liability to the district in this area. So it would be reasonable if anybody had any questions or comments right now? Technical water legal stuff? Somebody wants to dig into it? We really appreciate Sandy, all the time you put into it and the back and forth with legal to make sure that, and that you're not quite finished with. But as you say, it's not, there'll be no material changes. We can go ahead and put this action item then. Do you have the motion?
I move to approve the Chatfield Ditch Crossing Agreement.
My second.
Well, I think we need to read it a little bit more technically because of the changes that we're authorizing Sandy to execute, please.
Oh, I don't have it.
I've got it pulled up here. I'll move to approve the draft ditch crossing agreement, subject to modifications that do not materially change the agreement by Sandra Muchler, ECS COO and legal counsel, and authorize Ms. Muchler to sign on behalf of the Board of Education.
Thank you.
My second.
All right. Just because the agreement isn't 100% complete, but it will be complete by the end of the week. We need to approve it at the meeting. There are further comments or questions on this? Okay, Missy?
Okay, Mr. Amanza?
Aye.
Mrs. Alter?
Aye.
Mrs. Pacharela?
Aye.
Mrs. Jarno?
Aye.
Dr. Long?
Aye.
Mrs. Decker?
Aye.
Mrs. T. Varounis?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much, Sandy. And we look forward to seeing that finished agreement finally signed. This brings us to the other. Did you have anything, something that you wanted to say, Sandy?
I was just saying thank you, and I'm sure Scott extends his gratitude also.
Yes. And I'm just, I'll say here publicly, thank you, Scott, for your patience and understanding that we need to just make sure we're doing the right thing here on behalf of the district and our assets. So we're going to evaluate the meeting here in terms of governance policies. We may not have too much policy, but I'm really impressed by us, you know, teaching school remotely. And we're doing meetings remotely and getting business taken care of and continuing to move the business of the district forward, which I think is important and really appreciate everybody's patience and flexibility. And we're advancing our mission and goals by keeping moving forward. And then student learning, we're going to get some updates on that for Friday as far as some of the changes that need to happen because of the online learning. And we look forward to that. Anybody else have anything they want to say?
Well, I also thought the presentation in the work session around counseling and social, emotional definitely tied in with impacting student learning. That was great. Are we going to be talking today about coordinating timing for Friday?
I think we need to touch base on that before we adjourn. Yes.
We'd like to finalize the time on that. I'll throw out 2:00, and I suspect it could be as short as half an hour, maybe faster.
I'll be home.
I just have another meeting that starts at 2:30.
Okay.
So if it's brief, that sounds great.
It'd be brief. Fernando?
So I was checking my schedule to see if it, I also have an appointment or a meeting that looks, starts at 2:30. So 2:00 PM works for me.
Okay. Dr. Long?
Sounds good.
I mean, do we maybe want to do quarter of two or something if, if two of them need to be somewhere else at 2:30? Or is that not?
I have a meeting until 2:00.
Okay.
So that's a quick second. All right, Kelly?
2:00 works for me.
Yeah.
2:00 on Friday, I can be here.
Okay. It's our hope to continue to have these emergency meetings, but we're in pretty busy times. So I appreciate your flexibility and willingness to make this work.
Could you maybe send us, and maybe you already said this, could you send us the results of the survey so we can look at it before we actually meet?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. So we'll be checking our emails for the additional information that we need to make the vote on Friday at 2:00. And we appreciate that staff's going to get that to us ahead of time. Anybody else have any other closing comments? Hang in there. We're all doing our part. Stay home, stay safe, stay healthy. Appreciate you all. Meeting adjourned.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.